We're gonna call this City of Gallatin Council Committee Meeting to Order, September 22, 2022, 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll have a roll call, Miss Ketchel, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Ketchel. Now, you also have before you the April, the minutes for September 13, 2022. Motion by, made by Mr. Overton.
Second.
Ms. George.
Second by Ms. George. Any correction, changes, or any questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This time, we'll have public recognition. If you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, great city of Gallatin again. Patrick Reeners at 317 Malone Drive. And I want to say it's been a pretty good September, the cold's coming on. You know, I worked, you know, in this great country to earn enough money to save for a heater. And, you know, I did that truthfully and honestly, you know. And some people go around and they try to misuse the system, or point things out at other people. And in your workplace, you should look at someone that's trying to bring attention to someone, usually trying to draw it away from themselves, especially when they use dishonesty. So, one set of people and individuals that do that a lot are people that abuse women. You know, last time I spoke, about a year ago, we had, you know, abusive woman month, or whatever, and I didn't know. But if you actually bring up that subject to somebody you think might be being abused, and you look at them dead in the face, when you bring that subject up, they probably would turn their head away from you if they feel guilty about it. That's the way, like, picking out, you know, a victim. And we can all call ourselves victims. Leaders choose to be leaders because they learn not to use the system to be put ahead by trying to get, I would say, leverage from false pretenses, like, for example, pointing things out about people that aren't true to try to make yourself look good. Why not point out the good things about people and become a team? Team members do that. Everybody's got flaws, but the ones that can find the good in the greater good of people are the ones that will help our community, not people that try to nitpick anything. Because we need to help our community, so please, when you choose to vote, and you choose to pick anybody to try to represent your city, make sure that they're, you know, a team player, you know, and try to bring out the good in the community. Because I've seen some people on here that want to fight for campaigning, and, yeah, I'm talking about a particular couple people. And I really don't like their antics, and I figure I'm gonna take free speech to another level, and show America what it's like to have legitimate free speech that makes a difference, that doesn't cause problems, and try to get other people to follow the same narrative. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone ask from public, public recognition? Anyone ask from public? Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record, please, and you have five minutes.
I think you're gonna be glad I came up here this evening. This is John Ruth, 1268 Timberwood Drive. And as many of you know, I was on the City Council back in the late 90s, and we passed a political sign ordinance, and that's one vote I wish I could get back. That thing is a mess. It really is a mess. There's inconsistent enforcement, there's restrictions that can't be maintained all the time. And so, I would like to encourage you, mentioning I only have five minutes, I'll get right to the point. We got time before this election to set this thing aside. I would like to hear the next time I read the newspaper about a council meeting, that a motion was made to, I've got some specific recommendations, but a motion was made to take away the prohibition from the right-of-way for one way, for one reason. I mean, we put up, we put up with big auction signs all throughout the year, we put up with real estate signs, we put up with house washing signs. I promise you, you've never seen a master's touch cleaning sign in the right-of-way, but anyway, we put up with that throughout the year. And that's all important stuff, that's good for our economy. But here we are, you know, with what is probably about the fifth or sixth election since this was passed, and I'm still talking to people as I go around campaigning for myself, and they're like, "I didn't know there was an election coming up." I mean, this is a busy year with the county primary, and the county general with the state and federal primary, and then the city primary with the state and federal primary, I mean, general. It's a busy year. And so, I really strongly would like to encourage the council to think about setting this aside. And there's time to do that before this election. You can have it done by October 19th, and that'll give all the candidates, what, about three weeks, to get signs out, and increase the awareness about the election, and maybe help turnout, and do the citizens some good. I will make some notes about what my specific recommendations are and get them to Mayor Brown. But if you start tonight, because I, the way I read the charter, everything's gotta start in committee, so that's why I came tonight. So if you start tonight with a motion, at least to consider it, maybe that'll get it rolling. So, thank you very much for your time. Good to see y'all, really good to see y'all.
Thank you, Ruth. Anyone ask from the public? Please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Cam Patel. I live in Gallatin, 421 Woodlands Drive. I'm here again for the liquor distance. I think, I think last time we, councilpeople dated for one mile, but can you please do it half a mile, so it will be easy to find the location, and that way, people can open a couple more liquor store, city will make revenue from that, will be, create more jobs, and all of the things, you know. So a lot of good things, people can open the new liquor store. Thank you.
Anyone ask from the public? Anyone ask from the public? If not, public recognition now is closed. We'll have mayor's comment at this time.
Thank you, I have several events upcoming that I just want to share with you. First is the GNRC Annual Meeting and Luncheon, happening tomorrow at Geodes Park. It is the annual meeting and awards, and I don't think we have many people from the city going, but there's a few of us. The Saturday's the Main Street Festival, Downtown Gallatin, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, put on by Historic Downtown Gallatin. Always a great event, hopefully the hurricane won't get up here and rain it out, but that's, look, everybody's looking forward to that, if it can happen. Then, of course, that evening is the cemetery tour. Again, the weather could ruin it, let's hope it doesn't. On the third, which would be Monday, is Councilwoman George's birthday. On the eighth is the breakfast at the Music City Executive Airport, that happens at 8 to 10 on that Saturday. Homer Bradley Motorcycle Ride, in honor of Councilwoman Love's father. He started a motorcycle ride many years ago to benefit the Southern County Food Bank, and this year, the Director of the Chamber and myself are perpetuating that until Linda's ready to take it on. And we are going to be doing the ride to benefit Feed Sumner, which is the new iteration of the food bank, being run by First Baptist Church of Hendersonville, but located here in Gallatin. And they're doing a great job with the food bank, and so, we're going to be doing this annual motorcycle ride to continue to support them with funding from our community. So I'd encourage you, if you know anyone that likes to ride, everyone that does it says it's a great ride, it's 70 miles, I think. And then if you'd like to sponsor it, we would certainly welcome that as well. All checks go to Feed Sumner. Also, on that day, they're going to be celebrating a grand opening and ribbon cutting for Feed Sumner. It's located on Gregory Drive, it happens at noon on that day. And then that evening is the Southern County NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet. I'll remind this council that I do have tickets available, if there's anyone interested in going. The city, as they usually do, purchased a table this year, and so if you'd like tickets, just let me know. On Monday is Columbus Day, and most offices are closed. And that evening, however, the Gallatin Area Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a candidate forum at Ball State from 6:00 until 8:30. Also, I want you to put on your calendars, October 16th, the Second Annual Music and Fall Festival, happening at the Comer Barn. And then, the Mayor's State of the City Address will be happening on the 17th of October, and this year it will be at Northfield Church, so I'm certainly looking forward to that. I do want to let you all know that I will be heading to Nashville shortly, I have a meeting down there, and will not be here for the whole meeting, but I'll be here as long as I can. So, I think that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll get into our agenda. Item number one, continued discussion of the liquor store ordinance, Mr. Overton, Jimmy Overton.
Yeah, I would just ask by some folks to put this back on our agenda, and see if any councilpeople, anybody has any other comments about it, that's why it's on here. So, if anybody wants to chime in, you're welcome to.
We settled on one mile radius, correct?
Correct.
I wish it was a half a mile, that's just my wish.
I would suggest, if you're going to consider that, that you have IT create a similar map, so you might get a comparison between the mile and the half mile. I don't think the object here is to have a lot of liquor stores, I believe the object to have been to add some more liquor stores, so, but I think that would give you a visual, a visual overview of what the opportunity would be if IT's willing, Lori's going, great.
That map helps me to be able to visualize it before, so.
Yeah, I think so too. But why would we go back to a half mile instead of a mile?
I feel like it's protectionism, is what I feel like.
I feel like so.
When you make it a mile, I think if we do it for one industry or entity, that we need to do it for others, and I don't think it's right, I'm for free enterprise.
You don't have the legal ability to do it for other industries, or, I mean, it's pretty much that, or adult entertainment to some degree.
Well, the half mile would really help my district a great deal, because most of our business of old is on West Eastland and Bligh Avenue, which I know we rezoned, but we've got some existing building that could be there, but they are within a half mile radius, so I'm kinda like you, Ms. Fennell, I'd like to see the half mile as well.
I'd like to defer this until we could see a map that shows it.
I'm fine with that.
There's been a motion, okay, well, let me carry this out first, please. There's been a motion that we defer this to a later date, second by, made by Ms. Love, and the second by Mr. Overton. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carrying now.
I just see clarification on whether you want the half-mile circles, or do you want the half mile from the front door, like?
I think our, I think our ordinance is front door, so I think that's what we need.
Half mile from the front door to the, got it.
Please.
Okay. Item number two, discuss the annexation of HP Town Homes, Ms. George, Councilwoman George.
Thank you. I'd like to, the last time this was brought up, I voted against it, and I would like to revisit this, and I don't know if we should do this at another committee meeting, or in a voting meeting.
Well, under Robert's Rules of Order, it's because the motion was defeated, the proper motion at a future meeting, which would be probably, we'd have to follow the saying, but the proper motion would be to renew the motion. When a motion has been defeated in the past, then the proper motion under Robert's Rules of Order is to renew the motion, but it would have to then follow, go back through the entire process.
From only the winning side?
I'm sorry?
From only the winning side?
Actually, under a renewing motion, which I learned this myself, I don't see that same restriction in the past, we've always said, that's a motion to reconsider, and that's usually during the same meeting, has to be from the prevailing side. But I don't see that here. I do think when you're renewing a motion, it makes sense that someone from the winning side does bring it up, but I don't see in Robert's Rules of Order that that is actually a requirement.
Does that need to happen at a city council meeting, or can it happen at a work session?
I think it can, it just says at a future meeting, so I think it could happen. Actually, probably it should be at a full meeting, and then it would go back to the work session.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we move this to a voting meeting, and I will not be here at the next one, which is next week, so.
You can actually just put it under other business and make the motion, or you can put it on the agenda, either way, but would, for transparency's sake, since if you think someone's going to make that motion, but if you're not gonna be here, you might want to defer it until you're gonna be here.
Well, and since it has to go back to a work session before it goes to a full council meeting for voting, I think under other business is actually fine. Does that seem fine to you?
Under Robert's rules, it, you know, if you're wanting to, I can see for transparency, if, since we're discussing it here tonight, we could put it on the agenda, just so that the public knows, you know, can anticipate that it's going to happen. So if you want to move it to a meeting when you're going to be present, I think that would be a proper motion to make tonight.
Okay, then I would like to move it to a meeting on October the 11th.
Second.
Been a motion made by Ms. George to move it to October 11th, second by Mr. Overton to move it to October 11th. Any question or comments? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carrying now.
That would actually, I'm sorry, I'm, I think the 11th then would be a work session, correct? Or, yeah, that would actually, because next week is the committee meeting, and so the 11th would be a work session, so it needs to be brought up at a 18th.
The 18th, sorry.
But we amended.
Do we make?
I'd like to amend the date from the 11th until the 18th.
Second.
Amendment made by Ms. George, second by Mr. Overton, that we move it to the 18th?
Yes.
Okay, any question, comments on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
No.
No.
Oh.
Okay, roll call, please.
What changed?
I thought about it.
I don't think everyone voted the first time, honestly.
Oh.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
No.
Councilman Alexander.
Yeah.
Councilman Fann.
Not at this time, no.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
No.
Councilwoman Love.
No.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
We have three yeses and four nos.
The motion, the amendment failed. Is that correct? We voted on the motion, so now the amendment failed, do we go back to the motion?
Yes, I would say go back to your motion.
Back to the original motion for the 13th?
11.
No, 11, October 11, I'm sorry, October 11.
Which is a work session.
A work session, all in, we voted on it again.
Well, the amendment failed.
Yeah, but the motion carried.
Motion carried.
But we're not supposed to have it, start out at a work session?
Correct.
No, I thought it was any meeting.
Well, it's supposed to be at a meeting, because this is a committee meeting, you would want it to be at a, at a full meeting. Because this is considered a committee meeting.
Okay. It looked like if that motion carries, but the amendment failed.
And we can do a motion to reconsider by someone on the prevailing side, because we're in the same meeting. So now you can do a motion to, the prevailing side from the original motion carried, because not everyone voted. Someone on the prevailing side can do a motion to reconsider. I mean, if you bring it to a work session, you're gonna have to, it's gonna have to, you're gonna vote on it there, and, well, you really can't. You're gonna have to move it to, you're gonna have to do the same thing that you did tonight, and try to move it to a meeting, because you can't vote it, shouldn't vote on it at a committee meeting.
So, what do we do?
Well, you can do a motion to reconsider.
The motion would be to reconsider putting it on the agenda for October the 18th.
What we just brought up?
No, no. Second. Oh, my goodness.
Okay, so we changed from the 11th to the 18th.
She's doing a motion to reconsider.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Ms. George, a second by Mr. Overton, reconsider.
Now, this motion, in order to reconsider it, it has to carry affirmatively for you to reconsider.
This is just to reconsider?
This is just to reconsider, yes.
And then we vote again?
Yes, then you would have to vote again.
Oh, gosh.
Sorry, I'm trying to make us follow Robert's Rules of Order.
So, so if we voted?
Then, I guess at this point, since you had motion, second, I would like to say one thing. I mean, I think that we're kind of missing what I think Ms. George's objective was here, in that while a lot of people on this council did not like the project, what we have done at this point is created a perpetual hole in the city surrounded by city property. And that does cause me angst. You know, there was a lot of debate, it's a very small project. This project has gotten more discussion than I think anything that I can recall, but it's just a very small project, it's between industrial and commercial, and a single-family home development that's not been built yet. So, you know, having a donut hole in your city creates problems in perpetuity for, you know, the police and fire departments, for the Public Works Department, for, you know, any, all the issues that we have. And so, now that we've separated the annexation from the actual project approval, it doesn't make sense to me, or at least at this point, it doesn't make sense to me. To me, it feels like a great opportunity to be able to annex property and make our city whole, and, and, and adjacent to each, you know, to keep it, keep it without any holes in it. When we have the opportunity, there are some areas that we will never have the opportunity to reclaim, and.
This is five acres.
Five acres, and so rather than continue to create more of those, and of course, I don't get to vote, but it just seems like it's counter, counterintuitive, counterproductive to leave those gaps in our city, when we have the opportunity to create a hole.
But they can also change their project and come back and ask for annexation, or anybody can.
But, or they can develop it without it, you know, that's, that's the challenge, and, and, you know.
They can develop the townhomes without coming through the city.
Now, that would be up to the county, that would.
If you drive by it.
But they could, certainly the county could allow them to do a commercial development too, because commercial's very appealing to the county, because they don't have the sales tax generators that the cities do that we share with them. They, if it's a county property and it's commercial, they retain the hole. So that's appealing to them, but I can't tell you what they might or might not do.
Ms. Chairman, I don't think anybody discussed it, but everybody understands the property we're talking about, correct?
Hartsfield Pike by one of the market areas.
Right behind the market.
We talked about the entrances and exits.
That's correct, yeah, right behind the market, yeah, right behind the market.
Took me a second to.
Yeah, and it was, it was the property too, that the gentleman was going to make a financial donation to improve that intersection, which we weren't even asking for, but they felt like it would, I guess he and Mr. Tuttle had powwowed, and that that would improve that intersection, which would help. I don't, I don't recall all the details, I just look at it from a standpoint of, we've got a hole, and we had the opportunity to eliminate that hole, and.
Exactly, what was he gonna do to improve it?
Adding a turning lane, was that it? Do you recall, Mr. Tuttle?
No objection, Mr. Tuttle.
We are working with TDOT, we've been awarded a state industrial access project, and so TDOT is actually the one that's improving the intersection at Airport Road and Hartsfield Pike. But we do have, with that SIA project, we have a contribution that we're supposed to make, and I think it's actually in the range of $38,000, and I believe the developer offered $40,000 to basically cover our share of what goes to that project. Now, there were improvements on, on all the intersections, those three different intersections along Airport Road. Most of them were adding turning lanes, right-hand turning lanes. I think at the Hartsfield Pike and Airport Road intersection, it was adding a right-turn lane, or extending a right-turn lane from Hartsfield Pike, turning right onto Airport Road as you're coming in from Castigian Springs.
How long will the turning lane be?
I don't remember the detail of it, and the other turning lane was a turning lane from, from Airport Road running north, turning right onto Hartsfield Pike, going towards Castigian Springs, which would be a nice addition to the intersection. So he was gonna, to basically cover our share of what our.
Was the turning lane coming headed east, gonna be past the entrance of the store?
No, I don't think it was.
Nick, if I, am I wrong in thinking that the Bledsoe Springs developer was gonna, was going to do something to improve the, the traffic along Hartsfield Pike?
They were adding a left-hand turn lane in front of their, their entrance from Hartsfield Pike. So they weren't gonna do anything at the intersection of Airport Road and Hartsfield Pike, they were just gonna do something along Hartsfield Pike where their new roadways were coming into the development in Bledsoe Springs.
I know that the conversation was that it was adjoining, or not adjoining, that it was adjacent to a single-family home development, but it's also adjacent to, I think, a gas station and an industrial property, so.
Right, on the north, it abutted the industrial property and.
So if their choice has then become single-family homes or commercial, then you're gonna have commercial abutting the single-family home, so I, I, that's why I said a couple times, I thought the, the development was a good transitional product, but.
And to get into the townhomes, they're, they're going through Bledsoe Springs subdivision, so if it was commercial, would they be bringing their commercial trucks and things through that subdivision too?
And what engineering would say?
So their, their plan was to have accesses on both sides of the, the townhome development, and the access on the gas station side was going to be gated, so that only folks that lived within the, the townhome development could go into, from that direction. I suppose if someone wanted to, to drive down to Bledsoe Springs, come in the backside of the townhomes, and then go into the, the commercial development, they could, because they're not gonna have a pass.
Now, I think her question was, if it had been, or if the proposal were to develop it commercially, would that same access be required through the Bledsoe Springs development?
Um, we would encourage it. You know, it's gonna be up to the Planning Commission, really, to, to make that recommendation to you, but we would encourage that cross-connectivity, so that people that lived in Bledsoe Springs didn't have to drive out onto Hartsfield Pike to get to the convenience store, or the restaurant, or something like that, they could just pass through the commercial development, so you save that trip from Hartsfield Pike that, you know, people get upset about so much traffic on Hartsfield Pike.
That's true, but I think I would be.
Trying to keep traffic off of Hartsfield Pike.
I think I would be upset about commercial vehicles driving through my neighborhood too.
Well, I thought I understood you saying that the commercial, or the, you were saying if they made it commercial instead of townhomes.
Would they still be going through?
You're saying if.
I'm saying, since they want to in and out, and that's the way it is with the townhomes, they would be one on Hartsfield Pike, one way in and out through Bledsoe Springs. If it was zoned commercial, and they built a, a factory or an industry, would that apply still? One in and out on Hartsfield Pike, and then have, needed another in and out through Bledsoe Springs.
Understand what you're saying. You know, we really didn't want a, we were hoping that there would be a low-traffic generation use to go into that hole. Matter of fact, when somebody came forward with an idea that there was gonna be many stores to go there, I was happy about that. But, for whatever reason, I think the zoning didn't work correctly, and that didn't really, I don't know that you all ever saw that. But they came back with something that fit the zoning correctly, or fit the. or fit the, Jill, I'm talking a little bit out of turn here. But it, it fit what the, I think the master or the general development plan recommended. And so that's why this is coming to you like it is. But personally, we preferred a lower trip generation use because we're not really happy with how the entrance to the convenience store lines up with, I forget the name, the street across Hartsfield Pike. I think that's correct. It's County Road there. And it's, it's misaligned a little bit. So we were just not really happy with some of those things. So we were hoping to try to reduce the number of trips, which the townhome development is not a huge trip generator. So we wouldn't wanna see, I don't know, a Dollar General store go back there or something like that that's gonna have more trips in and out. So it's kind of...
There's no good solution, really.
Nick, is that gonna be a ride-in and ride-out?
It's a full access. And, you know, really argued with T-DOT about how they would do that. And they're not adding a turning lane from Hartsfield Pike to make that turn in. They're gonna use the existing dedicated left-turn lane from Hartsfield Pike to turn left onto Airport Road. And they're just gonna restripe it. So you're gonna affect the storage area for people that would be coming from Castanet Springs, turn left on Hartsfield Pike, or turn left on Airport Road.
People will be able to head east and turn left across the lane?
There, there could be some potential for, you know, people playing chicken in a two-way left-turn lane right there. That was something we were not happy about, but it was what T-DOT allowed, which is, it's state route and their decision.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor by Ms. George to renew and second by Mr. Overton. So that's what we're voting on now, to renew.
Reconsider.
Reconsider. To reconsider. Everybody understand the motion?
Reconsider.
So we can, no, I don't understand. So we're gonna, we're redoing that original motion, is that right?
So before you write now is a motion to reconsider, which if that passes, then she can, Councilwoman George can ask that it be moved to October 18th instead of October 11th. If this motion fails, I guess what we'll do is just put it on the October 11th work session meeting. We can have this discussion again.
Clear as bloody water. Everybody ready to vote? All in favor of reconsidering? Let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign.
I now make a motion that we move this to a voting session on October the 18th.
Okay, there's been a motion made that we move this to October the 18th, made by Ms. George, second by Mr. Overton. Any questions or comments about the motion? All in favor of the motion of October the 18th, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Need a roll call for that, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Van.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes. Councilwoman Love.
No.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Fine, the motion carries. Four to three.
Three does.
All right, motion carries. Now we're going to item number three. Thank goodness.
Mr. Alexander, if we could, Mrs. Flood and I had a discussion. We're gonna move this to the work session, the second work session of October, whatever that day is.
Are you deferring this item on here now?
Please, to the second, to the second work session in October.
It's the 11th, right?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Is, just for what is on the agenda? Or, I, I would like to know before we get there, if we could have just a little discussion.
All job descriptions.
So we're gonna have one resolution with all job descriptions. And I'm gonna let Ms. Flood explain because it's her department and not mine.
I was under the, I was under the understanding we were gonna move forward the, the one that's currently on the bucket tonight and then add a new one with the three departments.
That's fine. Don't we bring them both at the same time? I'm okay with it.
Okay, and I cannot do October 11th.
Well, the second work session would be the 25th. The second work session of the month is what I'm...
That's fine.
That's what I think you're saying.
Second work session of the month.
Okay, good with you? October 22nd?
25th.
25th.
22nd?
25th.
25th, okay.
25th.
October 25th.
And so I'm gonna bring two resolutions.
Correct.
Okay.
There was a, a motion to defer to October 25th.
And a motion made to defer this to October 25th. Any question or comments? All in favor of defer, let it be known...
You're second?
Second.
Thank you.
Made by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Hayes. Any question or comments? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, October 25th. Item number four, many gals and personnel rules and regulations related to vacation leaves. Ms. Flood.
Good evening. This morning, we had, and the department head meeting a discussion in regard to this. So we're gonna need to do one change.
Actually, I think there are two changes.
Okay.
With what? Got emailed to you this afternoon.
Would you like me to read that?
Okay.
New employees hired on or after October 1st, 2021 will receive five days at the start of their employment and accumulate the remaining five days throughout the first year of their employment. That would be a total of 10 days through zero to four years. And that's the change that, that we're bringing forth with the resolution that you have in the packet.
There was the one additional change, and then what was, you sent to me, then what we sent back to you. There should be a second paragraph. I think you should have that, is what I believe was handed out.
About the workday?
About the section 16-2D to amend it by adding the words, unless specifically approved by the department head. So that 16-2 reads, "Should employment terminate prior to completion of the probationary period, no vacation leave or pay shall be allowed. Vacation shall be granted only after satisfactory completion of the probationary period unless specifically approved by the department head." And that was what was discussed in the department head meeting this morning. Sometimes when employees come to the city, they already have a vacation that is scheduled. And I thought it was unfair if they've already got something scheduled and paid for that they are not able to at least let them go and take the vacation they already have scheduled. And so that request was made. Otherwise, the resolution is the same as it was in your packet.
Most approve with these two changes.
There been a motion made by Mr. Overton approving, and second, Fennell, any question or comments? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item number five, ordinance number 02210-55 appropriating $2,777.18 from revenue received for insurance recovery. Mr. Brown.
David Brown, Parks Director. This was just some insurance recovery to fix two trucks. We wanna switch it from the insurance recovery fund to the expense fund.
Most approve.
Second.
Been a motion made by Mr. Overton, second by Ms. George. Any question or comments? Oh, Ms. Love, I'm sorry. Ms. Love, Ms. Love. I'm sorry. Any question or comments? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carry unanimously. Item number six, ordinance number 0221, I'm sorry, 02210-56 appropriating $8,462.88 from the general fund to American League supply. Mr. Brown.
This ordinance is approving the transfer of our donation fund that's been in the donation fund over to the expense account.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Overton, second by Ms. Love. Any question or comments? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, ordinance number 02209-53 appropriating funds from 2022, 2023 cover over capital project. Ms. Nichols.
Thank you. The departments have given a list of the projects that they would like to roll over unspent funds from 2021 into, I'm sorry, 2022 into the 2023 fiscal year. Several of these have been started, but just not yet completed. And we need these remaining funds to finish out those projects.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Ms. Fennell. Any question or comments?
Is it typical to have this much of a carryover?
Yes, ma'am, of late it is. We typically have around $3 million in the general fund and anywhere from $2 to $5 million in water, sewer, and gas. Just the timing of when the construction starts. A lot of projects start in the spring and obviously they're not complete by June 30th. You have to carry them over.
Okay, all in favor, any question or comments? I'm sorry. Now, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried and... Item number eight, Resolution RR 2209-68 accepting the authority of TDEC and ARPA funds. Ms. Nichols.
As presented last week, week before, we have received ARPA funding specifically through TDEC. They would like a separate resolution showing that the city has accepted and authorized the use of those funds. That's what this is. We've already appropriated the money, but TDEC would like to have this authorizing resolution on file as well.
Been a motion made by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Hayes. Any question or comments? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carry unanimously. Item number nine, monthly final report of June and July. Ms. Nichols.
In your packet are the monthly reports for June and July. These are unaudited. There might be a few audit adjustments still to come for June. But overall, the general fund ended the year very well. We actually ended bringing in $9 million more than we spent. But we just turned around and spent $3 million of that with the carryover ordinance. We also have open POs that carry money forward of roughly $1 million. So that didn't all go into the fund balance, but quite a bit of that went into the fund balance. So general fund had a good year this year.
Great.
Is there any questions, if anybody has any? And also before the meeting, I handed out the latest sales tax chart. We continue to collect over $1 million a month, which is fabulous.
Wonderful.
Good job.
Ms. Chairman, can I ask Ms. Nichols a question while she's up here?
Please, please.
Ms. Nichols, I don't know, two, a few weeks ago, I'd ask you to get some kind of guidance for us on, on the hotel motel tax. Do we have that?
I was gonna bring that up next. I have contacted MTS and the state and asked them specifically about using the hotel motel tax to upgrade our ball fields, two different things. One, changing from the sand-based field to the clay-based field and the other for the lighting. And they said that that would not suffice in and of itself, that it's routine maintenance. Mr. Brown and I had a conversation of, well, what if we could get some of these league presidents to send us a letter stating if your field had this and this, then we would hold our tournament here. And the response that I received from the comptroller's office was that was still not adequate, that the local population would be the one benefiting more and not the tourists that come into the area.
So my question was not just about that, but my question is what can we spend it on? That's what I'd like to know.
The way our ordinance is worded, we can spend it on anything that generates tourism into Gallatin. We could do ads in nationwide travel magazines that would bring people from other areas of the nation into Gallatin or some other state publication that's in east or west Tennessee that would bring people into Gallatin. The whole, the way the, our ordinance is worded and the way the comptroller is looking at that, it's very specific that it's got to bring outsiders into Gallatin.
What about... What about the airport, if we have a sign out there? A billboard at the airport about Gallatin, city and the lake and just advertise...
National Airport?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Some kind of advertising, yes, ma'am. I think they would be fine with that. If we built some sort of convention center or event center and staffed that with the dollars, I think that would be acceptable.
So Rachel, if we, as piggybacking off what Mr. Fennell said, if we decided we're gonna have two tournaments, large tournaments, in the city of Gallatin, could we use this money to upgrade the fields if we're gonna have two tournaments? And bring that many people in?
We would have to do more than just have a letter from the tournament directors or tournament presidents. The state would not, would not give me a definite on that. They just said that they could not give specific guidance. They gave me an AG opinion and they gave me some other yeses and nos, but...
I think I would go upon a maintenance, you mean?
Yeah, but just, just to piggyback off of that, talking to two or three other park directors within our county, how can they use the money to do this and yet our ordinance says we can't? So do we need to change our ordinance that says we can? Because there's two or three other cities here within our county that uses this money to upgrade their fields and do other things, to bring more people to their city to play ball.
This went through the state legislature. And the wording went through the state legislature and was approved that way. And also, we function under a city charter. I don't know what these other cities function under. It would all depend on how it was defined and how they were established.
Maybe we're gonna have to, maybe we need to do that, because that's...
We'd have to go back through the legislature.
Anyway, we...
Oh, good while. I mean, I can't, I can't give you a specific, but this legislature doesn't meet until, they don't start meeting until January. Well, they also have, they're not a private act charter. They are, you know, under the general statute. They have a general charter. And I don't, I don't know what their, they may have had a different ordinance at some point. I mean, we can, sure, Mr. Brown and some of us can research to see what they're doing. At this point in time, I can't answer those questions because I don't, I don't know. All I know is the comptroller has said that we haven't provided enough information and we certainly don't wanna do something that the comptroller's told us that we can't do.
I'm, I'm gonna drop it after this, but you know, we, we, we put a lot of pressure on, on some of our departments to upgrade their departments and do better. And we have to fund that some way if we're gonna do it. We've got one field over there that we just made the improvements on. And you can ask any, anybody you want to that plays over on that field, how nice those improvements are. And we have to do it to our ends. If we want to improve our tournaments and improve the way we do things, we have to change and we have to fund it. And, and, and I thought when I voted on this, that we discussed it and, and this was a good way that we could fund it without taking out a general fund, that we could fund this to get more people in the city of Gallatin. Because when we voted on this, this was all about bringing people into our city to play sports and do other things that increases our income. And now, after we've done it, I'm hearing that we can't do it.
I don't think Rachel's saying we can't do it. I think... I think that we have not provided enough, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think there could be other ways.
Such as?
I don't know the answer to that, I think it's gonna take some research, but what we've done so far, it's been a no.
Well, will somebody do the research and let us know how we can do it? Because I think a lot of council members on this council, and y'all can speak for yourselves, but we wanna see the improvements made to get where we need to be. And we don't, and we understand, we understand the general funds and stuff, and we're not asking, you know, we, we, that's why we have other revenue and other sources to get it. But if we got this money sitting out here, that's just sitting there in a pot, and we can upgrade our city, and we can upgrade our fields, and we can upgrade things to bring more people here, why aren't we doing it? That's my point, that's, that's all, I'm gonna hush after that, okay? But I'd just love to know how we can't spend it to bring more people here, and we can do better, and, and, and make our fields and stuff better. That, that's all I'm asking.
Well, again, per the comptroller's office, just a letter from the tournament presidents or, or chairman would not suffice. We would have to do more than just that.
Will somebody research and let us know what we have to do in order to be able to use it? Please. Thank you.
How much money are we talking about?
We probably have $600,000, $700,000 in there right now.
I think when we closed out the year, we had, um, over $600,000.
We could do a lot of work, we could do lights, we could do upgrade fields. This, this new field that we just come out of general fund, that we just redone at the, at the Parks Department, at the, uh, baseball fields, it, it's absolutely gorgeous. And I mean, if anybody hadn't gone over and seen it, you gotta go see it, because people wanna play on it now. We've had people go to Hendersonville because they don't wanna play on our fields. And now we got them wanna come up here and play, tournaments come up here and play. So we gotta do something, we can't just sit here and not do anything and complain because we don't have people coming here to play. So we've gotta do something to do it, and I understand the budget, I'm not asking to do that. But this is a part of money that we said, if we can get this hotel motel tax approved, that we'll be able to bring more people to the city of Gallatin, and that's what I'm all about, letting that, people come here, that we don't have to send them to school, we don't have to do any of this other stuff, they come in and spend their money and they go back home. And that's what I want this money to do.
You think if we had some kind of research that showed how much out of, out of, out-of-town visitors usually come to a, to a tournament, and, um-
Linda?
What's needed?
I, my wife's right now, with the grandkids, at travel ball, or, I don't know if it's football, or baseball, or which activity's going on today, but I go, and it's a lot of people. If, if I was a restaurant owner here in this city, I'd want to see this happening right here, because once we have breaks between games to go out and get a seat in a restaurant, it's hard to do. And I see a lot of revenue from other people visiting those areas spending, and I think it's, I think it's-
And I, I'll challenge any of, just go right down the street to Hendersonville, and I'm not, I don't keep using Hendersonville, but go down there and look at their Parks Department, look at their ball fields, and you understand why so many people come down there, why so many tournaments are held there. It's because they look nice, people wanna come play on them, and we've gotta get to that point, we've gotta get back to it. We haven't spent any money in the last how many years? We cut money from, from, uh, not just that budget, but others, and I understand why, I voted to cut it. But we, if we got money to spend to improve our stuff, we have to do it.
I'm with y'all, I'm just wondering if that's, if that would help to get those figures, figures of how many out of state, out of-
Do we have enough fields to, do we have enough fields for tournaments?
Yes.
We just, we just got some that need some more.
Some need some lights.
Do we compare to Hendersonville?
No.
Okay.
In the size of population, no. But, but with, but with the people that we have that wants to play ball here, and, and, and the sports programs that we have here,
But it can't be people that want to play here, it has to be tournaments, it has to be bringing in.
I think what Eileen, uh, Eileen's talking about is how does it compare?
No, my son played.
Yeah.
How does Hendersonville facility, the number of facilities is what I think she's talking about.
Rachel. How often are you able to submit this request to the comptroller's office?
Oh, I talk to him every day, multiple times a day.
You think if we resubmitted it again, that we might get somebody different with a different opinion?
No, this went through their entire office, there are multiple people on their staff that saw this. I don't know that we would get a different answer. If we had something additional to go with it, um, to support that the field upgrade would bring in the tourism, would have X number of dollars anticipated, um-
My understanding is that we were declined on a term, is that right, Mr. Brown, because of the condition? Wouldn't that be reason enough?
According to them, no. We've got to prove the, um, financial-